With some big jumps, you see eighteen nineteen went up eighteen million, twenty twenty-one went up forty million, thirteen point six percent. And then you see some of the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two and went up eleven point six million. Essentially, Senate, as you look at this, this is a key slide that I do think from a public standpoint is gonna be important to us in the future, and especially with Senate Bill 3. Is, and I would encourage anyone who's watching this, to go to the Jefferson County Property Bureau on the Assessor's website. And look on there, you can actually click on where your house is, and you can see past years how much your house is worth, and how it changes each year. In two thousand twenty-one, it went up eleven point six million. My own personal home went up about twenty thousand dollars assessed value. Well, in two thousand and twenty-four, it has the exact same assessed value. Why that becomes important is Senate Bill 3, which tentatively right now is supposed to go on the ballot, will lock in the assessed valuation of my home at that two thousand and twenty-four number, which is ultimately the two thousand and twenty-one number, because it didn't move since two thousand and twenty-one in Jefferson County. And in two thousand and twenty-three, inflation is very high, and a lot of around the state of Missouri, assessed value valuations went up, but they did not in Jefferson County. And so, that issue is gonna have a long-term drag, not just on Hillsborough district, but in any political subdivision in Jefferson County. And I kind of referenced that, our new construction totals, two thousand nineteen was a big year. I jumped five million dollars actually when I met with Mr. Limors. I was trying to reflect on in two thousand nineteen, there was, that was a brick yard, and we're fish ups in Houghton Point, or if there's any significant newer buildings. And so, but as you can see, it's maintained kind of that between one and a half, two and a half now. So, that there, I put in there why it matters for Hillsborough three, for short and long term, is it sets our tax base. So, that is our assessed valuation, as certified and included, the actual summary is in the document. Can I just move on now to the next slide?
Okay.
Uh, the next item is our tax rate ceiling. Our tax rate ceiling is then determined by what is known as the Hancock Amendment. That is tied to the assessed valuation, and it impacts, this is where everything is working together. Assessed valuation is done by the assessor, we get that number. The Hancock Amendment, which was passed in the early eighties, the intent is to protect the taxpayers against a sudden jump in tax. And then about the early eighties come out in seventies, and inflation was so high, the intent of the law is good, protect taxes, is, it's tied to CPI, so we have the assessor does his work. This year assessments went up a significant amount, but that CPI letter says that inflation's two point nine. So, the Hancock Amendment says, a district can't raise, that has to lower the tax rate to essentially capture the two point nine percent, even though Jefferson County is showing that growth has been more. That's why, when you look at some of our numbers, you're like, assessed valuation Jefferson County's went up a hundred and twenty million, but the net of way that occurred along with that CPI is a huge deal, because in the year that it was, CPI was six or seven percent, in Jefferson County, our growth was one percent. And so, at two point nine, if you have a countywide growth of ten percent, yes, economically it looks like paper's in it. So, while it shows a forty percent growth, really school districts were not seeing that growth or any of the tax increases. So, all this said and done, with the Hancock Amendment rolled in, we have to roll approximately six cents back on our operating levy, and we will do that. Over since two thousand eighteen, the tax rate ceiling for the district has declined on our operating funds from three dollars and sixty-one cents to three dollars and thirty-four cents, a drop of twenty-seven cents over seven years. For perspective and for mental math, each, a dime this year is three hundred and fifty dollars. So, at a twenty-seven cents, we're creeping up on a million dollar difference that we're not able to receive in revenue. So, I share some of that information as well. To the next item, the levies required, when we set the tax rate, is what we set in the operating levy. The operating levy, as we talked about earlier, is, operating under that is Fund One, which we're gonna have three dollars and four cents, three point oh four three eight, fulfills the minimum levy requirement, has to be above two dollars and seventy-five cents. Our debt service, that's our general obligation debt, our Fund Three, that will be set at thirty-three cents, thirty point three 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 nine this year. And our capital projects, we're gonna put third cents in there to meet our payment obligations on that. Our debt service levy, we could have left and charged more to the taxpayers this year. I had a visit with Ms. White, is, if we had charged a little bit more, and the tax rate would have stayed the same, or actually gone down a little bit, we would have paid off all of our debt in its entirety this school year. So, we felt like it was important, such that there's some economic times right now. With that, is, we're, we're leaving it to pay off this, how much will we have left? I want to say a hundred and fifty thousand, or two hundred?
I don't have that on the levy.
We're under a million though, for sure.
Yes.
Because it's gonna be like under a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, that'll be dragging kind of left there. But ultimately, our debt service levy, we anticipate running after next year. Taxes will be going down again next September, and then after next year, assuming we would not have any more debt service. Any questions on that? Prop C reduction, two thousand nineteen, we had a Prop C rollback waiver, so we don't have to, we're not required to roll back our tax rate ceiling. So, when that is all said and done, the district is proposing a reduced total tax rate of three point six seven 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 per one hundred dollar assessed valuation. This will mark the fifth consecutive year, in six years of two thousand seventeen, that the district has lowered the tax rate without then a subsequent increase during that time. Our tax rate is the lowest tax rate this district has had, I put thirty years, but I feel it's longer, probably more than that. I just can't find the data, free nineteen ninety, that's just a hard year, so that's all in paper and such, so, but a long time, I mean, it was in the previous. So, and it shows how much we, within this document, will generate about fourteen point four million dollars local. Last year, our tax rate was three dollars and seventy-three cents. So, this is something I want to share, encourage any person that lives in the community, watching this, seeing this document. This is in Hillsborough, in two thousand and seven, our tax rate was four dollars, four point five eight nine. So, on a three hundred thousand dollar house, the school taxes were twenty-six hundred dollars and sixteen cents. This upcoming year, the taxes on that, on a three hundred thousand dollar home, will be two thousand and ninety-six dollars. And this went down five hundred and ninety-two dollars. So, and you can kind of see the difference on that. A lot of times, publicly, people will be like, those school taxes are going up, and all this, my school, school, school. And I know I don't have much time in the tax rate hearing, but I do think it's important to talk about, and I wanted to bring this, within this document, under the proposed tax rate, is, I'll open this. In two thousand and sixteen seventy, now this is kind of hard to see, is in here, this also shows, when I say we have the lowest tax rate in thirty years for Hillsborough, we have the lowest tax rate in Jefferson County by a long way. This is two thousand sixteen seventy, alright? So, if you look in here, this is two thousand sixteen seventeen, and there's a comparison, so I'll show this year where the tax rate was, and there's a document in there. I literally go each school district in Jefferson County, to look at what they've done with their tax rate, since, goes back to two thousand and seven, and then each year. And so, within this document, I'm kind of bouncing around here. This is a document here, it shows Hillsborough, but I also have included every school district, they're aware of this, I shared this with them, because during that same period of time, Crystal Cities has went down, et cetera. And so, almost it has every school district's tax rate, going back to two thousand seven and seventeen. But in here, I jumped on this right here, and I think this is important for taxpayers in our community, because I went to the Jefferson County property, this is John Isaacson's taxes, taxes on my home. In two thousand and seven, the taxes on my home were thirty-two hundred and nine dollars. That was a total due to the Hillsborough School District and taxes, that's all, that's Fire Department, all those throughout. My tax bill in two thousand and twenty-four was three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Since two thousand and seven to two thousand and twenty-four, almost twenty years, my taxes have went up in the community sixty dollars. I can tell you that the value of my home has went up much more than that. So, but when you think about our tax rate, and in the future, we may have to duly, long term, ask our taxpayers for a tax increase, if we want to accomplish certain goals, and we have good funds right now, it's not an emergency, but if we want to achieve some of the other things that maybe some of the other districts have built and such, we would need to ask for a tax increase. And that, there's, for example, is, the school district is getting the same amount of money in two thousand twenty-four from John Isaacson's, as they got in two thousand and seventeen. And so, I encourage any of our taxpayers, residents, to look at these documents, show a lot of comparisons, and really try to break it down into a real world, like, hey, how does this, how does this impact me as a citizen, because the school finance and all the different Fund Four and all that gets a little bit confusing, so. The proposed tax rate is on this agenda, and again, you will submit this for approval of three dollars, three point six seven seven seven, in open session.
Thank you much. Any questions from the board? This is now the opportunity for anyone that's in attendance tonight, that would like to address some more with regards to the tax rate specifically. We've got just a couple minutes. It's here tonight. Tonight's tax rate.
I just have a comment. I live here in Hillsborough, and I have kids that go to Hillsborough, so if we need to raise our tax a little bit, make sure our kids have everything they need, I'm fine with it.
We're not saying that to see, we're actually lowering it.
I'd be fine paying more if we needed to, too. As long as it goes towards our kids, I'm okay with it, because I think our kids deserve the best education.
Appreciate it. Anyone else to address the board? And then I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn the tax rate meeting at six fifty-nine. Second, all those in favor? Motion carries. We'll take just a real quick recess, and be back here in a couple minutes. Good session. A motion called order here at seven oh three. Do I have a motion tonight to approve the agenda as amended? Are any questions on tonight's agenda? All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Before we continue, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move directly into tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda as they are presented? Any questions on the consent agenda tonight, related to investments, financials, our tenants' report, any items of concern? Alright, hearing done. All those in favor of approval? The six agenda items. None opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we'll get into some reports tonight, turn it over to Dr. Isaacson for the superintendent's report.
Yes, a brief superintendent report this evening, just wanted to thank all of those in our district, the staff that put together the different POW and MIA remembrance events over the last few weeks, from the football game and ceremony to the vigil on Friday. Put some notes in there for Rocky Sickman and Paul Dillon, of their gratitude, actually Chamber of Commerce, Jack Portress spoke to the chamber, and spoke again of the school district, and it's, it's great as a district calendar, which is no one on such a wide scale, for our focus on that, but it's very special. One, just up the board, that I visited with the Labor Club, first time I had gone over there, over in Festive, and had the opportunity to speak about the district and the wonderful things that we have going on here with our students, and some of our focus on the trade, our real-world opportunities, and our relationship with Jefferson College, so, a lot of which they didn't know, so it was very exciting. These are a lot of our trade unions that work on our projects and such, and so, shared with them some of the, our upcoming projects, and also some of our upcoming tax items and such, and then also kind of gave a little school finance overview there, so it was a really good evening, and I'll probably head back in the next month, just, I learned a lot, even just locally on that. Homecoming is next week, and so, lots of information will be coming on social media related to that, and many good events, visited with Mr. Reed now today, and the Hillsborough Foundation is just taking off. And so, very exciting there, we have a great group, is, some events on Thursday, would be the first annual Hillsborough Foundation Golf Tournament, I believe there's nineteen teams out there, maybe we have one more opening. And then, really excited for Friday, if you're an alumni of the school district, they're having a tailgate party starting at three P.M. at Browder Ridge Farm, you'll park at the, at the high school, we have a shuttle bus taking you over there, retired teachers are gonna be there, and classmates, hopefully. I would imagine the retired teachers, because they came to the retired teacher event, now this past spring, and really enjoyed it, and Larry and Johnson and such, and so, of those graduates, I would encourage you to come out of it. They have music, they have broads and burgers and chips, some yard games, corn and stuff on the farm, it's the first annual kind of a long night mixer, from three up until game time, and they'll get you back over to the game. And we have, the parade is at one thirty, so probably immediately after the parade, that event, so, some exciting events, and then obviously the last one.
Any questions on the superintendent's report? Also have some information to share tonight on the upcoming school board candidate filing.
Received this from the county clerk's office, and just wanted to share the candidate filing period for next April, April seventh, the first day to file for the, to be a school board member is December ninth, beginning at eight A.M., and the last day to file is December thirtieth, at five P.M., but I would, on the back end of that, that is our Christmas break holiday, so office hours may be a little different during, maybe impacted during the Christmas break. And so, the location to sign up, to serve on the school board, if you choose to do that, would be at our central office, contact Mrs. Noack downstairs.
Alright, moving to the next report, which is this month's budget through August twenty twenty-five.
As attached to, within this agenda item, is our expenditure report through August thirty-first. Revenue, we've received ten percent of our revenue, about four point four million dollars. We've spent six million dollars, which is about fifteen and a half percent. Of that, some of that early year spending, which is actually a bit, excuse me, higher than normal, in part is because, remember last spring, we got to jump on some capital projects, and did a little bit more than what we typically would do, and just got to do van trailer, so we've kind of front-loaded a lot of our capital projects, so that's why you're seeing that amount of spend so early in the year. So, that'll definitely flatten back out, it's not an over-budget thing, it's more of a timing budget. So, just explaining there, detailing our expenditures for this year, in addition to the revenue, as you look at this report in the public, and both, this will be on the website as well, is, we put the two thousand twenty-four and the fiscal year twenty-five, which was the last school year, and twenty-four, so they can compare differences. That also helps us as a school district, that if something seems wonky from year over year, that we're not expecting, it's just a great check and balance for us. So, everything looks fairly normal, revenue down just a little bit, as we anticipated, and so, pretty simple report, early on in the fiscal year.
Any questions on financial reporting? Next item of business is with regards to public comment. Any items of public comment tonight? We will then move into some new discussion and items for action this evening, starting with a bill for approval to Jefferson College. Do I have a motion to approve the bill to Jefferson College this month in the amount of five hundred dollars? Any questions on this? Hearing done, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? One abstention? That motion carries. We also have the approval of the Google Plus for educational licenses. Do I have a motion to approve the adoption and purchase of these licenses from CDWG in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars, over a three year time? Any questions on these licenses? No, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? I'm sorry, it's a yes, sorry. None opposed, and no abstentions? Okay. Unanimous? Yes, all those in favor of approval, and none opposed? Motion carries. No, no worries. Alright, and we have informational item tonight, a report on Senate Bill sixty-eight from Dr. Wood.
So, over the summer, Dr. Isaacson updated everybody on the legislative session, and what, what had passed and what affected school districts. One of those was Senate Bill sixty-eight, so recently, and most of that has to do with safety and safety upgrades for the district. Recently, myself, Jim Ramsey, our safety coordinator, and Kathy Woodham, our health coordinator, we sat down and dissected all the requirements, have your report, we meet almost every one of those requirements, such as just having emergency operations, operations plan in place, site assessments, which we started last year, and we continue those annually. Ms. Woodham does a great job with CPR training, we train, offer two trainings a year to staff, plus we require coaches and our bus drivers, but we're gonna add a few more people just to make sure we're compliant. It doesn't have to be every individual in the school district, they just want a nice portion. Having safety coordinators in place, and so, we meet most of those, there are a couple that we do not meet, and they're really minor. One of those is stop the lead kits, and so, Ms. Woodham's working on ordering some. and they're really minor. One of those is stop the bleed kits and so Ms. Woodham's working on ordering stop the bleed kits. And they're really small kits and so we'll place those in every, ID for the,
A.D.s.
Yeah, A.D.s. We'll place those in those boxes. And then we'll have to offer training to all of our nurses counselors. We'll offer training for those. And then, one other one, FEMA and sixth man response training. Jim has been trained on it, but I have not and so just have a few people in district training. But other than that, the anti-intruder door locks and bullet resistant film, we do not have, but that's not necessarily a requirement unless you add new doors or complete a building, a new building project. So, maybe something to look for facility committee wise in planning for the future, but right now that's not a requirement on our current facilities. But like I said, happy to report, we cover most of these with the exception of just a couple small items.
Any questions?
I thought we had that on. I thought we, I mean, going back to,
Yes.
1516, I thought we had that.
The 3M bullet? Oh, there.
So. Other questions? Do we have an itemized list of where that film is?
I do not, but I'm sure we do.
Yeah.
I don't know, personally.
Have that in, whatever the SOPs are for this.
I'm sure that's part, when we do the site assessments, I'm sure that's part of the site assessments too, what yours have that, what are safety and,
Yes, you bring that. That was a part of the, that bond issue. The front, I don't know that it was, the February 1st.
It was pretty significant, yes. Other questions? Alright, so shaping the report. Our next item is the approval of the John Deere lease with Site Stricker Nobi. Do I have a motion to enter into a 12-month lease agreement with Site Stricker Nobi for the rental of three utility vehicles. There are two John Deere Gators and one John Deere Gator Model S4. Total cost of $6,480. Any questions on this contract? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. Right on to the approval of the MOU with CI Solutions. Do I have a motion to enter into a three-year managed services agreement with CI Solutions in the amount of $4,030 per ID card production, hardware, software, support, and implementation? Any questions on this contract?
I don't mind expanding on it. We recently rolled out the scanning GPS system for our transportation department. It's going really well. We have not turned on the actual live updates where parents get live updates. We still have some training left to do. It's made our transportation department, there's still a few things to work through because it's just so new to us and it's just a big undertaking, but it's definitely makes us more efficient. This is just one more piece to it to where we can print our own cards. We'll, we order those in bulk and then we'll be able to print our own cards at the transportation department, so.
Is the software or is the implementation putting more labor effort on the driver themselves?
Uh, yeah, at the beginning, yes. I mean, handing them out, making sure kids are on them. But as we get used to it, it'll be just part of our routine. I actually drove a bus last week twice and even the, well, for the majority, I felt like probably ninety percent of the kids have their cards and even the students that didn't, the high school kids, of course, it's not always cool for them, but they didn't have theirs. And so, it's really easy on tablets to go by and swipe and type their name. Now, on a busy highway like 21, it's probably not, you know, two, you know, stop traffic, you don't need two. But out on county roads, it was pretty easy for them to log off. Yeah, it's a little more labor intensive anyway.
I followed the bus the other morning and they, it does slow down a bit, but for the benefit that is gonna come about, I think it's gonna, it's new.
Yeah, it's new.
Implementation.
And they warned us, they warned us with the amount of kids we have riding our buses and how big our geographical spaces, they warned us it would take us a few months.
Other questions?
They're right, boss.
Okay, hearing no other questions? All those in favor of approval of this MOU? None opposed? Motion carries. Alright, on to a short report regarding the high school HVAC project scope and work presentation.
So, Aaron, if you don't mind pulling that up, there's a couple of documents. The shorter one, one page.
Okay, pass word of education in the title of the document.
There's two documents on that. One is the large that provides all the scope of work for this project and the other is just a one page. But we have Anna with us and Darryl from Schneider Electric. I've been here for three years now and since I've been here, that's one thing we talked about is the high school HVAC project. It's, it's a, with the building, so it's been twenty-five years now. Ray, our maintenance team, and Justin, our HVAC tech, have done a great job maintaining it. But it's just at the end of the course, we're constantly replacing compressors, replacing heat exchangers, the boards, motorboards, the circuit boards actually run it. You can't find them, we're buying them on eBay or buying them just wherever we can. So, it's just twenty-five years old at that time. Derek, can you answer the scope of work? Darryl, he's an engineer.
I'm the senior director of operations.
Senior director of operations. Derek, you gotta go with the scope of work and then we'll go from there.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it. Dr. Lur, good to see everyone and excited to be here and talk a little more about the project. I know I've been at a few facility community meetings and updated the board of education a few months ago. So, today we have the final review of the presentation to share with you and then also here to answer any questions that you might have. Everybody knows me, but I'll let Darryl give a little more of an introduction on who he is and then we'll get into the scope of work.
I'm the senior director of operations for the region. My responsibilities are the development, the fellow engineers, project development, the energy engineers, the implementation of all the construction management. And then on the backside, I'm still responsible for our guarantee, warranty, everything on the backside. So, everything but sales, I'm responsible for.
He's got the sales too, but, yeah. So, I'll go ahead and start with the financial summary actually and we'll go into a little more of a high level overview of that scope of work. So, the total project value is right around $8.7 million. This is a guaranteed maximum price. So, the district will not be seeing any change orders here. We feel really confident in our design. But if we get into the project and find that we might have missed something, then that risk falls on Schneider Electric. So, the district can feel confident in the fact that there won't be any increase in cost to you. And that project value is also inclusive of all of the auditing, the engineering, the construction management, the equipment, all the subcontractors that will be working on the project, as well as the supported warranty after the fact. So, looking at that total project value, the district has a couple of different scenarios that I think you'll be considering for financing after this presentation. So, one of those opportunities was a low interest loan through the DNR. They're offering a two and a half percent interest rate for ten years for about one and a half million dollars. So, about two and a half points lower than what we're seeing in the market right now. And from there, the district can fund the rest of the value through a couple other funding sources, whether that be district capital or at least purchase agreement. If you remember from the primary school LED lighting, district light LED lighting from a couple of years ago, the district received about a hundred thousand dollar check from Amren for that rebate post-construction. So, we're estimating about $60,000 of a utility rebate for this project, which would be presented to the district at a board meeting after construction is complete and the project is finalized. We're only looking at the high school for this specific project, but looking at replacing all of that equipment would result in about a ten percent reduction in utility costs at the high school alone. So, it's about $20,000 every year, not including the operational savings from replacing the compressors and having people come out for emergency repairs and replacements. Any questions about the financial review? We'll probably get more into that here next. So, if you could scroll down just a little bit there, Mr. Moore, thank you. Okay, so before Darryl gets more into the technical solution, when we were auditing the facilities in 2020 ahead of the LED lighting and HVAC project at the primary school, we identified and Mr. Buss and his team had shared that the high school equipment was twenty years old at that time. So, now here we are five years later, the equipment is more than twenty-five years old and the district and Mr. Buss and his team have done a great job extending that equipment past its useful life. Typically see it last fifteen to twenty years. So, the fact that you've got twenty-five shows that it's being taken care of and maintained as best as possible. Like, it's really getting to the point now where it's difficult to find parts and there are a lot of emergency repairs and replacements that are needed and it's just becoming more and more difficult to maintain. So, our solution would address the entirety of the equipment in the high school from both an equipment standpoint as well as the building renovation system, which would then match the rest of the district system as well. So, Darryl, you can share a little more detail.
So, it's a full comprehensive technical system for the full high school. The way we approach this is around comfort and energy at the same time. So, there's seventy-two existing water sourcing pumps. We're actually only about to seventy-three. There's like one room, I think it's one fourteen that's, you guys have splits or locking that off into two areas. New hot water quarters and all the equipment that comes with that as well, the food coolers, energy pump pumps, hot feeters, air separators, all of that that comes with it. Nineteen rooftops that conduct here. So, it is a full comprehensive system for the full high school that we'll be replacing. The people we'll have out there will be, you know, fully commissioning to this operational system as well, validating and commissioning. They are going to be certified, certified for all of that and on the oversight and things we go through. So, when we're done with this system, it will operate as per design, as per our design with our engineers and everything. So, one of the things is we go through this, an engineer system, is we do constructability reviews from the very beginning. So, as we're designing and when we implement a system, construct a system from the very beginning, we know exactly how it needs to be installed. If there's any risks on any kind of, you know, maintaining equipment or anything like that, we do as well from the very beginning. So, we want you to have twenty-five plus years on this equipment going forward as well. So, the way you do that is by having the installation correct from the very beginning and operating correctly from day to day. So, that's, that's where we start on this and we'll kind of restart. We end up, it's just making sure that this is a, you know, full operating system, everything's working correctly. And then we're building on existing electricity system as well. So, existing system will stay. We will be adding, you know, depending on the situation, new controllers or back net into the electricity system as well as we implement this project.
Thank you, Darryl. And just from a timeline perspective, if the district were to approve the construction contract this evening, then our team will mobilize on getting equipment ordered and simplifying everything with the timeline of the summer 2026 installation.
How long does it take to install this?
System like this, our plan is to have it operational before school starts next season.
So, it would be a summer.
Yeah, it'd be a summer installation for us to install, yes.
What interference would it be with the classes? Because obviously, it's gonna start before summer.
The way we build is scheduled out for this. The classrooms during school, we will not interfere with.
Really? Not at all?
What we'll do is we'll look at different timelines throughout the year that we can come in and do some pre-work. What we'll do is any prep that work outside, things like that, we'll be able to do. And then when the summer break comes in, then we would be doing the major bulk of the installation at that point in time. We do at times, depending on the situation, work nights, weekends, things like that. We do not want to interrupt the school if we do an installation like that.
Does this impact the TAP grant work that's kind of also, I mean, it'd be kind of happening along the same timeframe, it just kind of popped in my mind.
No. Mostly sidewalks are mentioned here, so I think. How much is your section? Section 27, correct? Yes. So, should you?
I'm gonna say two. We typically do at least a two-week look ahead construction meetings once we get into construction. So, one of the purposes of that meeting is to hear from the district of the projects that are going on or schedules we need to work around. And so, we need to be aware of it if there are other partners working, you know, within the same facility, then just having a communication with everybody.
We'll do a pre-construction meeting. And go through our full schedule, make sure that our schedule doesn't interfere with anything within school itself. And then, like I said, we'll go into agreement. Now, we do know there's no B test or something, but you know, that's, that's construction. So, we do work around your schedule and stuff. When you guys have something that comes up and says, hey, we have an abandoned truck out, could you, you know, give us this area? Then we work with you to get those areas and stuff like that.
Visiting with Ms. Hildebrand, we've already discussed the summer school arrangements and things we've talked about. That's with Ms. Smith about the kids theater, when they reach out to Jefferson College, because it's switched flipping that and potentially even for some of the athletics is some of the offseason weightlifting, maybe utilizing the junior highway room for a period of time.
Looking at the scope, the data say that would be down for the majority of the heat pumps themselves because it is a group type system. So, as you're bringing, you know, installing them and things like that, you have to isolate people like that. The data say on that would be, when you start replacing, you know, the equipment for that, you know, the boilers and the food cooler, so then the whole system would be down at that point in time. We'll be, we'll be here on that schedule to determine, when are we going to do that installation? How long will it be? Rooftops, other pieces of equipment that are, you know, separated and, you know, they can still operate until we do go in and replace it, stuff like that.
Dee, at the map, the red side is obviously the educational side. That's where the seventy-three, seventy-two pumps are. And then the gym and the other side, the theaters and our shop side, that's the, most of your rooftop units on the side.
Alright, then let's move on to the approval of this MOU with Schneider Electric. Do I have a motion to approve the energy services contract with Schneider Electric in the amount of $8,739,846 to complete that full turnkey HVAC project at the high school? Any other questions, concerns, comments on the project? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. I have another presentation regarding the heating and air conditioning system at the high school and that is the financial plan and options in regards to finance.
Since we have a MOU, we gotta figure out how to pay for it. Mr. Moore, if you could open up a presentation there is how we're going to pay for it. As was referenced, a couple different options that we looked at. We're going to utilize the DNR loan for the two point five percent interest rate. The item with that loan is it has to be paid back in the first ten years. This is actually on the informational finance portion. It'll look like this. So, that's a ten-year term and that'll become important for the district as we kind of go through these items. So, that, then we start looking at the remaining balance is we looked at several different options as, visiting with Ms. White, looking at a capital reserves balance because even with this project, we're still gonna have different needs and repairs and things that we need to maintain. We're gonna have over the next several years, at times, a vehicle may be repaired, et cetera. And so, and looking at the paving projects, the roofing projects, we know that we've already set the $400,000 aside for the sidewalk project, as well as some of these other long-term ongoing repairs of items that we already have. So, that, from a long-term standpoint, is the football field, that turf, since we already have turf, we now have to maintain. That feels within 2018. And so, we have to prepare for those type of items. And so, if you, on this, Mr. Moore, if you play, And so, if you, on this, Mr. Moore, if you click on this item here, the financial, and then scroll up to, uh, I'm looking at this perfect. So, what this diagram is, is in that, in the board package below that, uh, if you're at home and you want to click on a, a full PDF, what we looked at, we asked, we got two, uh, bids. Uh, one was from Bank of America and the other was locally at First State Community Bank. They requested, uh, for them to provide a quote if they'd be interested. We banked with them and they provided a quote. Their interest rate was, uh, point, point and a half percent over the Bank of America. So, uh, we then, our recommendation is a Bank of Amer- the Bank of America loan. Uh, then we looked at the initial term, as, but we started with fifteen years. Uh, we asked for a twenty-year notice wealth, uh, just to explore what, uh, that did from an interest standpoint and cash flow. These funds, this eight million dollars ultimately is going to be coming from our capital account. And then, uh, not a debt service, we're paying off our debt service, we won't have a general obligation. So, this is coming out of our, our operating funds, our capital account, of which we'll, as a couple of years, we put thirty cents in, um, which generates, uh, for each dime, as I said in that meeting. Each dime this year will generate about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in change. Three fifty-four, uh, actually, I have it up here. Three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars for each dime on our tax rate. That's a revenue that it will, uh, create. So, this is important for the district long-term and I've had this and put this, uh, together. These are current things as we pay off all of our general obligation debt. Our whole house currently is at two-point-nine, two-point-one-nine percent. Uh, we still have about, I can't count to the twenty-five, oh, ten years from now. Uh, Broward Ridge is at two-point, uh, nine-five percent. We have four years and that'll be paid off. That's about sixty-nine thousand dollars a year is the payment on that. So, very close to paying that off. We have a copier lease, uh, that we're right at forty-eight thousand. Our previous energy financing, uh, that we had done is a one-point-nine-seven percentage rate. So, you can see how much time, three percent difference since our last project. Uh, and so, we have one-point-four million left on that, which is about a hundred and fourteen, uh, thousand dollars. We don't, I didn't include for the purpose of our calculations, any of our energy savings. We will have some. We will have that sixty thousand dollar check and all that. For the purpose of looking at establishing costs, what the board is going to have to commit to, the district is going to have to commit to, did not include that. That was just, uh, the actual. So, as we get to, this is what we currently have. We're going to be adding these loans here. So, we have the DNR loan in twenty-six, twenty-seven. The first payment we do is ninety-four thousand dollars. That's a semi-annual loan as we go through and ask for approval on that. It'll be ninety-four thousand dollars, I want to say it's in February and then in August. So, uh, each of that, so a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. Then, we talked at length, uh, out of our capital reserves and, uh, Ms. White, uh, refigured with some of that. We expect to end this year at two-point-six million. I have it sitting up here. Be accurate. Excuse me, two-point-two million, but I don't want it over the four hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. So, we expect to be at two-point-two, uh, million dollars in capital reserve balances. Uh, but mind you, we already have some things that we obligated that for. You have the turf, you have the sidewalk and playhouse project. So, factor all of that in, um, does that also include the money down? And with this, as we started the year, five-point-two million in capital reserves. Our recommendation tonight is plan, we're not doing it tonight, but our loan is to put two and a half million dollars down on this project. We looked at putting two million dollars down. What was the difference and, uh, it's in that packet? And we really truly compared, uh, the difference in savings and actually, I have it at the bottom here, so I'll touch on that. By putting two-point-five million dol- million dollars down now versus only two, so we're keeping that five hundred thousand, you know, as a rainy day fund, that would, over the life of the loan, will cost an additional a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. But putting the five hundred thousand dollars down now, we save a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars. One of the reasons, um, we believe that it's good to put it now is, it's like, we've talked a lot about this even like in our own homes, right? Our HVAC is like the thing, we all have that, and there's always wants and needs. Our HVAC is a need, just like in our own home, that, uh, it's been twenty-five years. And some will ask us, everybody's got wants, like, well, why are you doing it now? Why didn't you do that before? Or it's, I actually took a picture of my own, coming to work, I've been thinking about that a lot, and so, talked to LaRue that was, uh, because I have a small unit for upstairs and they, they gave it out last year. And I'm there, I have a picture of it, inside my house, a new unit and old, I didn't replace both because it wasn't broke. So, that's why we didn't place the high school ten years ago, it wasn't broke, right? And so, now, as those things, we do have to address it and that goes into our planning. But putting the five hundred thousand dollars now is the right fiduciary use of those funds our taxpayers. And that's our obligation, uh, as we talk about our tax rate, is the twenty-year rate as well as of that. There wasn't enough squeeze or making it worth it. It would actually cost seven hundred thousand more dollars to do the extra five years. We even looked at debt stacking, looping a hundred and eighty-eight over onto there. It's in the plan to pay it off fifteen, but it just, it costs more money in interest and wasn't enough savings on an annual basis. So, what this is here, and this will be important for the board to make determination now, but also looking at the future. Down here is a comparison of the two and a half million dollars down net cost. Uh, this is a spreadsheet that's behind this, so I pulled this out. Because this is also putting an additional five hundred thousand dollars down, so we didn't make that for the total, uh, true cost, sorry, a little million dollars, uh, of the time we made all of the loan payments. Now, so this is the total annual loan payments. So, like, from a home perspective, if you buy a car for a hundred bucks, you gotta set that aside or your house payment is that much aside. So, these are all those different things. Next, or this current year, we have two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in obligations. Next year, that's going to go up to five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars that we have to make in payments. When we set the tax rate tonight, we're going to set it for thirty cents of capital. We've done that for several years. Currently, this year, when you see, uh, less than two-seventy-seven, we have to use eight cents to make our payments, our car payments, our house payment, to make all of the farm payments, et cetera. Eight cents out of that thirty is what is being used. Which leaves us twenty-two cents, uh, to then use, which equals seven hundred and eighty-five thousand to apply to doing the different projects, planning for the concrete playground. Uh, and one of the things too, we're going to talk about it, I don't know if Dr. LaRue's going to address, but as we talk about the culinary kitchen, is this arena we're putting together, do you have the final grant number? Do you have it in there? And I'll put it in, it's like, it's over seven hundred thousand.
Yeah, we're about eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand dollars that the district has received in grants since two thousand and twenty, of free money. Which is awesome. Uh, that's like a round of applause for this arena, right? But, one of those things on these grants, and this is important for the district going forward. The culinary kitchen, like, the district has to put out money and then we get a bunch of money. We get almost sort of the greenhouse. The greenhouse, we have to put out some money, but then we get a bunch of money. We can't even apply for those grants if we're not willing to put out some of that money. Which kind of seems, you can't ask for the free money. So, that's, as we're planning these things, it's just kind of relative. So, this, why I say that, this year we have seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And we're getting a grant for culinary kitchen, we feel good like, put it down. Next year, the available drops to two hundred and eighty-eight thousand, based on this year's assessed valuations, et cetera. So, this is what it's going to be. And as you can see, uh, year twenty-three, uh, two thousand and thirty-six, two thousand and thirty-seven, uh, the payment goes down, you can see. That's a big year, where the service is super tense, we're really excited, there's a lot of stuff drops off, uh, and so then, it bumps up to eighteen cents then, uh, for those type of items. So, that's where I talk about the tax rate here. That's a long time to, to wait, ten, eleven more years for some of the things that we need. Uh, and we'd like to continue to improve our school district. So, this year, what that is, is how much of our capital under our tax rate, how we'll have left over after we make the payments. And I'll put a little narrative with that for my historical purpose, trying to explain that. So, our recommendation, uh, after going through all this, looking at the twenty-year, putting the two percent down, or, excuse me, two million dollars down to two-point-five, final recommendation is do the DNR grant to take the lowest interest rate, which is a great interest rate in this current market, which was reaffirmed by, uh, by getting the other quote. Putting the two and a half million dollars down that we have now, which will save taxpayers a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, uh, over that term. And, uh, we budget for it and have a plan for it, just to afford it. But I also want to be clear, like, it's, uh, we've talked, it's many meetings and facility, different things come up like, hey, we need to rebuild our baseball field. I'm just, the district cannot afford to replace this baseball field without, ultimately, it will be a tax increase. To our operating, we have the lowest tax rate in, in Jefferson County by a long shot. And we're going to be reducing our tax rate again tonight for the fifth year in a row. And, uh, we've done a lot of good things, but truly, the district is at a point, as some of the general public and parents, that look like other districts have different things. Um, they're like, well, how do they get that? Is ultimately, they're paying more taxes. That's a black and white oven. They pay for what, they, they pay more money in their taxes. And so, that's, uh, if we want to move beyond that, because we have to take care of our needs. This is how that budget works out. I just wanted to throw that overview in depth. If you have questions about it in public, uh, or if you have any question on that, you'll be voting on those two items, whatever. Really wanted to give a deep overview because it's, and even having it kind of on record is, uh, the board, ten years from now. Why did they, is, it's important to have that history of why those decisions were recommended.
Appreciate that insight. Any questions on the financing conference? All right, so let's talk financing. Our next item of business tonight is the approval of the MOU in regards to this DNR energy loan program. So, do I have a motion for the approval of the loan agreement and those documents with the department, Missouri Department of Natural Resources? In the principal amount of one million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. This is at that two and a half percent interest rates, uh, one percent administrative fee for the purposes of the, uh, energy conservation measures that are part of this program. Any other questions specifically in regards to the DNR grant, our power block?
Just to clear up, why it's at one-point-six million dollars is because over that lifetime of this, this project, that would be potential savings of this project. Whether that's energy, maintenance, and so, you had to, you had to submit a lot of paperwork. And so, you, whatever that come back, that energy savings come back over the life of the project, and so, that's how they calculate it.
Other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, the second half of the financing here, the approval of the MOU with Bank of America on a fifteen-year term. Do I have a motion for the approval of the proposed fifteen-year master tax exempt lease purchase agreement with Bank of America for the HVAC project?
Can we also add to that with putting two-point-five million dollars down? Because that gives us a direction to.
So, specifically memorialized in the.
So that we know we're.
Yeah, with, yeah, with the specifics of two-point-five million dollars.
Down.
Any questions on this MOU? All right, hearing none? All those in favor of approval? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, then on to the acknowledgement of the commencement date for this project with Schneider Electric. Do I have a motion to approve, approve the acknowledgement and agreement with Schneider Electric and authorize the board president and superintendent for their designated to execute the documents necessary on behalf of the district? Any questions to that process?
This, we, we've approved the, the scope of work and the, uh, the project in Shire. We approved the loan amounts and so, this just kind of bugs everything up, uh, that we both agree that this.
Yep, it starts the mobilization. Any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor of approval tonight? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to the approval bids for the high school culinary classroom. Do I have a motion for the approval of the building from Brockville Construction in the amount of two hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred dollars for the culinary and fax room renovation at the high school?
So, a couple of things to note here, um, we received right at a hundred and ninety thousand, uh, a hundred and ninety-one, a hundred and ninety-two thousand, I'll have to find any. Um, it's one hundred and something. One ninety-one is from the grants, a similar grant enhancement grant that we put out for, that we did build a greenhouse with. So, um, we're receiving quite a bit of funds there, but I would like to note that this is strictly for the, the remodel, demolition and the construction, the electrical, there's a lot of, of course, the larger funds going in. This is not for the ovens and hoods, we'll have to go out for quotes for those. It will be daily quotes just to go get kind of threshold, threshold. But, uh, so there will be additional costs if we have those.
Mobilization on this project, is that what I have in the, within the school.
Yeah, so the timeline of this project, we, there's two classrooms upstairs right by the office. I can't remember what, room, two oh-one, two hundred, I think. Um, the first one is empty, it was a health and just kind of a spare room. Uh, that one's completely empty. They're going to come in, build the culinary kitchen in that room, uh, so you have a full-blown culinary, uh, professional kitchen. And then, so that class can kind of move over and at least have some classroom. And then they also use a classroom out of our hallway as well for a spare classroom for, for fax. And then, uh, that should be completed January sixth. And then, once January sixth is finished, uh, and that classroom's finished, our maintenance team's going to go in, tear the cabinets off and do the demolition for the other classroom. And then they'll start the fax classroom, um, and remodel the fax classroom. Uh, and it'll be just a standard kind of a kitchenette labs, you know, section. So, uh, there'll be a lot of coordination, um, some of it will be after the high school office. We'll have to move the high school office up, um, to somewhere for a short time, just because, and I'm talking days here and there, just because they'll often be underneath running electric and, but, yeah. So, expect to be completed, I believe, April, April seventh.
Any questions on this project?
So, is the, is the fax foods lab, is that going to be all speed and scale and whatever is going to be like home-like?
The culinary lab is, is, is all professional grade. And then the other one will be more of, like I said, kind of a home residential lab.
Okay, that's right.
It'll be six different, six different stations, different kitchens. I don't know if you, I encourage you to go by and look at it if you're on campus anytime. It'd be real nice to see, maybe we'll just picture it.
Do the change.
Yeah.
Other thoughts, comments? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor of approval tonight? None opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, last item of business tonight is to set the tax rate for twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-five, twenty-six. Do I have a motion to approve the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six tax rate of three-point-six, seven, seven, seven dollars for one hundred dollars of assessed valuation? Any other questions on the tax rate today? Hearing none? All those in favor of approval on the tax rate? None opposed? Motion carries. All right, last item of business tonight is, important dates, the calendar itself ended up. We have the MSBA annual conferences coming up towards the end of October that does overlap with our regular open meeting. I am typically the MSBA delegate, but I'm not fully in the chair, so maybe something we need to just work out, which is a reason why we tend to have that portion of the conference.
I think this motion signed up to go.
First alternate, so that's may have already been worked out. Questions, comments, items related to calendar or other district events? That brings us to the end of business. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at seven thirty-four? All right, all those in favor?